Ladies and gentlemen, please be upstanding for the first for me, councillor Kenz.
Good evening colleagues, welcome to the meeting of the council, please be seated. I am required to inform you that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public or press would like more information about this, or if they intend to record proceedings themselves, please contact Strategy and Democracy Services who will be more than happy to advise. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items should use the microphones available. As members will be aware Sylvia Asbragan, a former member of South Tyneside Council sadly passed away recently. Sylvia served as a member of the Whitburn and Marsden Ward from 2007 to 2015. Can I ask members to stand for a minute's silence in memory of former councillor Sylvia Asbragan? Thank you colleagues, please be seated. The first item of business is declarations of interest. One declaration has been received from councillor Donaldson in relation to item 11, the petition Cleeside Avenue trees. Does anyone now wish to verbally make any declarations before we move on to the next business? The next item of business is the minutes of the meeting of council held on the 25th of October 2018. Are they accepted as a true record?
They are.
The next business is may's communications. They are no may's communications, they report on this occasion. The next business is to consider a report of the corporate director, business and resources on the government order budget. I will ask councillor Ed Martin before we move the report, councillor Martin.
Thank you Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, the budget of the 25th of October, Philip Hammond, the transfer of the exchequer declared an end of austerity was coming. He also had the temerity to claim that austerity was never driven by ideology. Britain hasn't due it nearly a decade of fiscal austerity. And let's be quite clear, it was driven by ideology, it was a political choice, is a political choice. Did the budget signal an end to austerity for public services? According to the NDIU, the answer is no. The measures announced in the budget failed to meet the immediate needs of public services, which have had little in any real terms growth. It was the only budget to my knowledge, and I may be wrong, that has persisted on one-off payments, such as the payment of £10,000 per primary school for the little extras that the schools need, when school budgets have been cut by billions, and a short-term sticking plaster for social care, and not the long-term funding the social care system definitely needs. As Tony Torryby wrote, here was a pothole budget, a light spray of makeshift ascot over the riskiest traitors in the public sector. The end of austerity? No. Just minor repairs in a little of the damage that they have done, and I'm talking about the Tory party, the Tory government, things sounding good but signifying little. The statement also set out the prospects for national economic growth and government death forecasts. There remains a continuing budget deficit and therefore financial support to councils will remain very tight at least into the middle of the next decade. So therefore there was really very little in the budget for local government to cheer. The main measures in relation to local government were: a continuation of a £240 million for adult social care to deal with winter pressures in 2019-20, £410 million extra for adult and children's social care in 2019-20, but combined funding for adult and children's social care in 2019-20 is £2.6 billion. So less than a quarter of what is needed. And we wait with bated breath for the government's promised green paper on adult social care. £84 million for five years, work to connect the local authorities to help more childrens deal with care. £420 million for local authorities to spend on filling potholes that has largely been created by a decade of Tory austerity. The immediate lifting of the HRA, that's the housing revenue cap, was announced. The dictums around the number of announcements made by the chancellor are awaited, and that's including the future high street fund. So overall, with no change to the plan, £1.3 billion cuts to councils in 2019-20, there is still a cut of £650 million to councils for 2019-20, even after the extra £650 million for social care is considered. What we have seen, Mr Mayor, is a continuation of recent policies which has responded to advertent regime by providing a dollar of cash to alleviate the immediate problems but with no apparent thought to the future. No, Mr Mayor, austerity is not over. It's a self-defeating policy that should be abandoned forthwith. As the slogan says, Theresa May has said there was an end to austerity, but the cuts continue. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Is that seconded?
Seconded, sir.
Are there any questions on, or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Martin?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This was a fiscally irresponsible budget at the right length in the UK, whilst economic uncertainty surrounding Brexit remains to one that's still been a risk for hardworking people for the benefits of South Tyneside. What that means is that I've been continuing to cut tax for the lowest income earners by writing the taxation allowance to £12,500. The national living wage of £18.21 per hour and freezing fuel duty for the ninth consecutive year. I would like to remind all councils that the concerns balanced in disciplined approach to the economy. That is seeing unemployment drop to the lowest level since 1975 and youth unemployment halved, whilst also protecting public services such as an extra £20 million for the NHS without increasing personal income tax. Jeremy Corbyn has raised taxes to the highest in East London Street and since then spiraled. At the last council meeting, the leader of the council, councillor Martin, said that he could hope to see something in the budget for our highest rate. So I'm sure that you both agree that the government's cutting the business rates by one-third is what we need for small businesses in our time. Now I'm sure that a few of the councillors probably don't apply with more than a clear meaning to Tories for cuts to this council's budget for the past eight years. However, at South Tyneside, it's a high-performing council that is involved by finding new, efficient and effective ways of working in these more financially-proven times. That is what the taxpayers of the borough expect from their council, so the argument that the Tories are playing is completely flawed. As it begs the question, what excesses you must spend in your money in 2010? How do you think the taxpayers of South Tyneside expect from their local officials with the due understanding they have? Thank you.
Councillor Martin, do you want to respond to that?
Oh yes, thank you, thank you Mr Chair, Mr Mayor. My central office has done well, haven't they? Given a right old good speech there, a right good piece of propaganda. All I can say is this, Mr Mayor, this was a traditional Tory budget, with benefits flowing for the poorest by three-quarters of the winnings from raising personal tax allowances floating the top half of earners. What about those on universal credit? What about those who have had their welfare benefits cut? What about those? And, Mr Mayor, all I can say is this, that the visible nature of austerity now makes global news. When you have a French newspaper writing about the, that household collections can only be collected once a week, not in this borough, but in some other boroughs. The New York Times reported Northamptonshire has become a warning sign of the perilous state of Britain's local government. And then to top it all, the UN has said that Britain is living in poverty. We'd have to take an ambassador for the UN to point out the evils, the evils of what is happening in this country. And of course, we haven't got to forget as well, Mr Mayor, that the damage done to this country by austerity is only half of the, half of the, the, the problem. Because of course, before that, there was damage done by the Thatcherite thugs who deunderstand this could be all over the night, including the North East, including the North East. So that's what this budget's about, paying the rich and hurting the poor.
Councillor Martin?
Thanks for that, councillor Martin. Quite agree with you. Just one quick thing which I think everybody loses sight of somehow. Ed's talking about the cuts and how they're affecting communities. Talking about the universal credit and how that's affecting people. Talking about the UN ambassador. Well, let's come back to simple maths. They've cut and cut and cut and cut. This council is the third hardest hit authority in England and Wales, and yet despite that we're trying our best to help our communities. But the overarching problem that they're going to leave is the fact that they're going to leave more debt than we had at the end of the Second World War. The debt, whilst they cut, they've borrowed more money than any other national government in history. And that is their legacy. Thank you.
Councillor Martin?
Yes, I'm just looking back on councillor Milburn when he said unemployment has been reduced. Can you tell me why it's reduced? And why we've got all of these people on zero hours with no future, with no idea how they're going to exist financially from week to week because of zero hours? And these are people in work who are suffering. And they've got universal credit and my God, what a message made of that. Five to eight weeks for people waiting for benefits, you know? And some of these people, the partners are on zero hours. What an absolute disgrace. And when you ask where we spent our money before, we spent it on services, because that's what this council is about, providing services to our community.
Councillor Milburn, please sit down, you've had your say. Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to consider a report of the corporate director, children, adults and health, providing an update on extra care housing. I will ask councillor Dixon before we move the report. Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. That tanks are our social case strategy by prioritising maximizing independence by ensuring people get the right support at the right time. Extra care services provide an important element in making this objective by supporting people to maintain their independence within their community within the knowledge that they have access to the on-site support. Although extra care is recognized as being a key area in supporting independence, the council's extra care facilities, classed for quality control issues and leading poor in travel, were increasingly not fit for purpose with many of the doors and hallways in the flats being too narrow for wheelchair access and many bedrooms too small to house important adapted equipment. As a result of this, interestingly, both properties have seen voids despite continuing demand for support and housing. By upgrading both sites, the council has strengthened these important assets and ensures that they can support more people who require care. As part of the upgrades, nine flats across the two sites have been adapted for wheelchair users with hallways and doorways wide. The emergency core system of both sites has been upgraded. It classed a court to secure nine flat benching units. The additional monitoring technology has been developed. Additional community space at both sites has also been created to be used for additional day services provision for services that live in their own homes. Our extra care provision is invaluable for residents who might otherwise live in a small home alone which cannot retain their independence as possible in living in a little community. Since the upgrades, all four year properties have been allocated and one older person had already been successfully relocated from residential care into an extra care flat achieving increased independence. The completion of the refurbishment work is delivering more cost-effective outcomes for our residents at times when financial resources are limited. I would like to commend the staff involved in ensuring the successful completion of this work as extra care is a vital component supporting the delivery of our adult social care strategy. During 2018, both schemes have been subject to QC inspection. Here in Hall has maintained its good rating overall, whilst in terms of the task report, we are awaiting the final report. However, initial feedback, Mrs Mayor, suggests that we have retained our good overall rating. Mr Mayor, members are asked to note the progress made in improving our offer for the extra care and endorse the work's part of our vision to help people retain independence. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Dixon, is that seconded? Are there any questions on, or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Milburn?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I am glad you support this report and believe that the council's approach to allowing all of our older residents to live independently with support to be the right one.
Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to consider a report of the corporate director, children, adults and health, providing an update on the alcohol harm reduction strategy. I will ask councillor Dixon before we move the report. Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. South Tyneside's alcohol harm reduction strategy entitled 'Getting Your Measure Right' has been refreshed in court for the council's wider approach to tackling health priorities. The launch of this strategy coincided with alcohol awareness week and balanced launch of an alcohol free charter to be tried on the 19th to 12th November. This strategy will ensure a consistent approach to tackling the harmful effects of alcohol on a healthy, higher and proactive growth that is taking place internationally, regionally and locally. The launch of South Tyneside Adult Recovery Service, the STARS, has coincided with alcohol awareness week. By doing this, we have been able to further drive a conversation about alcohol and sample stores who need help to be able to access the right support for them. Alcohol continues to be one of the biggest public health challenges of the century and this is apparent in South Tyneside with high risks of cancer, further alcohol-related illnesses and alcohol attributable to hospital admissions with significant costs to all of us. Alcohol costs our local businesses and employers around £19 million per year because of absenteeism and loss productivity and it costs now £17 million in crime disorder. To refresh the strategy, a time-hitted alcohol harm reduction strategy partnership group was established and is met regularly since November 2017. There is a board membership including the council, the clinical commission group, South Tyneside NHS Foundation Trust, South Tyneside Homes, Human Safety, the Thumri Group, the Social Services. The development of the local alcohol harm reduction strategy built on the public health evidence base and is clearly incorporated in our local strategy. This new strategy is a result of consultation with local people, stakeholders and partners, which sent it on the question, what would South Tyneside look like if we tried less alcohol? A public question time panel was held earlier this year which gave local people an opportunity to discuss the impact that they have felt as a result of alcohol with a panel of experts. A workshop was also held with GPs to explore how raising awareness of alcohol is used with patients. As a result of these consultation events, priorities reflected in the strategy that we know are important to our communities. These ambitions include promoting alcohol through pregnancy, promoting alcohol through childhood based on the same goals guidelines, create a culture for people to drink less alcohol, reduce availability of cheap alcohol, promote a responsible sale of alcohol and reduce the harm that alcohol currently uses in South Tyneside. The approach focuses on place and people and includes a mixture of universal action and targeted action. Universal action is needed as the local environment affects individuals, their health and choices they make. Targeted approaches to keep safety in people's lives have particular relevance in their health. The light force approach is about responding to the importance of those two choices and offers a real opportunity to influence behaviour in terms of reducing alcohol and being a target in vulnerable groups. The alcohol strategy is one of seven key deliverables of the joint health and wellbeing strategy of 2017 to 2021. And our joint health and wellbeing also includes the content and approach within the strategy at the partnership in March 2018. A national plan will complement the strategy which will ensure the aims and objectives within the strategy are implemented, monitored and evaluated to ensure the overall vision is achieved. Mr Mayor, therefore I ask members of the council to endorse this strategy and add it to the equation. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Are there any questions on, or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Milburn?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I am glad you support this well-consisted report that looks at reducing the harms of alcohol to our residents of the borough. And while it is concerned to read that South Tyneside has alcohol harm outcomes higher than the English average, it is encouraging to read the strong partnerships that have been developed between the council and across agencies to be supported. Our interests will be interested in all, to believe member, if she thinks that this report will have any impact or change, if any, on the nightlife of our borough. You ought to read our South Shields as a council centre which is a thriving part of our economy. In addition, I would keen to know what the council is doing to support our local pubs and nightclubs by encouraging responsible drinking rather than drinking cheap supermarket alcohol. As we have seen very successful nightlife establishments in our town including Hoolworth, Tewkesbury, Blackwood, House of Clowns. Thank you.
Councillor Dixon, do you want to respond to that?
Yes. Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr Mayor. It's nice to see that the matter of the bill is actually for more even than all the businesses in South Tyneside. What we are doing is something that we are going to be working very, very hard with. And again, it's up to our home watch team to work with our businesses, in particular the licensing trade, to ensure that what we are doing is to bring the right outcome for our residents. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to consider a report of the corporate director, economic regeneration, on Lindisfarne one year on. I will ask councillor Mark Wash to formally move the report. Councillor Wash?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report celebrates the improvements made at Lindisfarne Junction one year after completion. Lindisfarne Junction was of course, was a cause of concern for a number of businesses. Traffic congestion, localized flooding has been several occasions where the junction has been completely flooded from a sphere where there's even congestion around the grid level network, clattiness between communities and schools, localized rat running through neighboring estates and air quality issues. As many members of the group will be aware, the Lindisfarne Borough was designated an air quality management area by DEFRA in 2017. The project was well several identified along what is classified as the western gearway, others being the arches, the southern port with a tiny tunnel and the year 195. Fund for the project came from a successful bid for local growth from Minnesota through the North East Combined Authority together with the contribution from South Tyneside Council. There were several strategic objectives for the Lindisfarne project including to decrease congestion, to improve journey times, to improve air quality, reduce accidents, reduce the risk of flooding and stimulate economic growth by enabling development and improvement in access to urban. Eleven options were designed and modeled for the junction. Once modeled, the best option was selected that would deliver the greatest benefits and can improve safety features and improve facilities for non-resident users. So one year on, how have these objectives failed and have they been achieved? I'm pleased to report to members that the objectives have been met and we should celebrate the fact that the improvements have made a difference for including journey times have been improved, air quality has improved and year 194 carriages have had compliant pronouncing dioxide emissions. What severe weather that we've had so far has been dealt effectively and evidence shows there's been a 36% reduction on road traffic casualties since the introduction of the new scheme. The project has delivered more town and budget through our framework partnership with GovTram and the same teams are now working on site completely beyond the development. In conclusion, the Lindisfarne project has delivered more as expected. Members should be assured that the engineering department is more than capable of delivering complex and challenging major projects. Members should also be assured that we continue to monitor and evaluate the scheme along with other major schemes, learning lessons and continually improving to ensure this and other capital schemes are fully integrated and properly managed. Members are asked to note the report and the achievements of the Lindisfarne project. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Are there any questions on, or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Milburn?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm pleased to hear of the progress and the benefits of the improvements of these trade for junctions which are delivering for residents and businesses' life. I understand there's a bit of a joke in the world that South Shields is just full of the wrong works, but I note that these are necessary to future proof, to future proof the infrastructure of the borough. On the topic of the infrastructure, I'm keen to find out how the council sees the future cooperation on the issue of transport in particular with that of the Tyneside Metro, which has been incredibly unreliable as of late given the breakup of the North East Combined Authority after this council's reluctance to join the North East Collective. The Tyneside Metro is what concerns me most. Better leadership and management must come from nexus, local councils and government to deliver better service to the passengers. And without the recent £337 million investment for a new rolling stock from the government, what is the council doing to improve things for the passengers? Thank you.
Do you want to respond to that councillor Wash? Can you turn your microphone please off councillor Milburn, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. South Tyneside council is working with all its partners across all of the North East region, irrespective to the combined work together in the joint transport committee and the Tyneside subcommittee to address and make sure that services are approved for passengers across the, across the province and across the region.
Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to consider a report of the operations director on the Christmas Wonderland Programme 2018. I will ask councillor Kurt before we move the report. Councillor Kurt?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report provides council with details of the 2018 Christmas Wonderland Programme which is scheduled across the borough. The switch on events took place on the 22nd, the 23rd and the 26th of November at South Shields, Jallow and Heaven. At South Shields, the switch on was hosted by BBC's Newcastle's Alfie Julie and featured Heston Mas터's Gemma as well as characters from the Julie from picture X, Fatness Girls, Gemma as well as characters from Christ House, pantomime. Despite heavily, we estimate two thousand people attended the event. We invested twelve hundred on the Jarrow switch and which included performances by Saint Louis's school by Mr Miller by the tavern approximately six hundred people. We do a test of the event and were entertained by Saint Alloch's primary school choir, Mr Miller in the Christmas Fairway. And the mayor and the mayor's bit of rest carried a three official switch on each of the locations. The Christmas Fair, the annual sit down on the Christmas Fair took place at Heatham Point on the twenty fourth and twenty fifth November in partnership with Groundwork. The fair featured approximately six stores and attracted over four thousand people during the end. The Come Up Parade, the Come Up Parade is one of the most popular elements of the Christmas Wonderland programme and this year the event will take place on Friday the seventh of December. The event will come away from here with this spectacular fireworks display, finding from the south pier was the cameras of left side. They will away from it. Civic Saturday concert, the Civic Saturday concert will take place at Temple Park Centre on normally the third of December. The event will once again feature South Tyneside orchestra and the latest form from schools across the borough. Well, that programme highlights, there will be a programme of school choir performances in the boroughs, in shopping areas as well as the unsullied festival entertainment. In addition, there will also be a programme of festival activities within the world and heaven centre. The precise content of marketing and who the motions campaign will support around activity and the big missing Newcastle will once again be the main media partner. Mr May, in more than the report, you will comment that the Christmas Wonderland programme supports our local town centres by increasing footfall and requires members to support many and various events taking place across the borough. Thank you.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Are there any questions on or does any member wish to speak to the report councillor Milburn?
It's for the council of Christmas.
Well, I'll second that one good.
If you write this report and believe that the council has a very good series of events across the borough dealing with Christmas, in addition to other events in the borough such as the very successful annual pantomime at Christendom House. This report mentions the secondary spending in the footfall that it reflects in driving. Could believe member perhaps in one reason of what sort of secondary spending impact these events have if we move. The subject of Christmas as this is the final meeting of 2018, well like the show or Michael Neeson stuff, the council, a very merry Christmas and a happy year here. I'm pleased to be here.
Councillor Kurt?
Mr May. All of this would not be known probably until after Christmas. Not much information given.
Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to consider a report of the operations director on the Ministry of Defence employer recognition scheme Gold Award. I will ask councillor Ed Martin to formally move the report. Councillor Martin?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr May. Mr May, council will remember that I reported back in February on the work that has been undertaken in supporting our armed forces community as well as the veterans reserve working for the council. As part of that report, I said that the council were nominated for the M O D's prestigious employer recognition scheme Gold Award and this could be in recognition for all the work we have undertaken in the borough. As you know, we were informed in September that we have achieved the Gold Award status and I would like to receive the award on behalf of the council at a special ceremony earlier this month. Receiving the Gold Award, the council and I would like to, on behalf of the council, I would like the council to acknowledge the massive contribution made by all partners at South Tyneside Homes, in Saffa, the Royal British Legion, the 205 Factory, the R F C I, the D L I Association and the Naffy Break without whom we would not be able to provide the comprehensive support of our armed forces community which has led us to receiving this significant accolade. Therefore, on behalf of all of our partners at South Tyneside Armed Forces Forum and the many veterans, reservists, cadets serving brutally and their families, I would like to present this reward to the mayor. Got the best thing? All right.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Are there any questions on or does any member wish to speak to the report councillor Milburn?
Thank you, Mr May. I'm very pleased to hear the progress of council considering looking after, looking after the men who have served our country in the borough and to hear that this council is leading the way among struttered people of society. Thank you.
Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to receive questions under procedure rule eight. Three questions have been received under this rule and are listed on the agenda. The first question is from Jack White. Mr White will receive a written response to his question from the lead member resources and innovation within seven days of this meeting. The second question is from Sam Prior. Mr Prior will receive a written response to his question from the leader of the council within seven days of this meeting. The third and final question is from Chris Smith. Mr Smith will receive a written response to his question from the lead member regeneration and economy within seven days of this meeting. The next business is to deal with petitions received under council procedure rule nine. Three petitions have been received under this rule. I will explain the procedure to follow for the petitions. We will not debate the petitions today. After the petitions have been presented, in accordance with the constitution, I will move that they are referred to the appropriate body. Petition work on Clayside Avenue Trace. This petition has twenty six signatories. Petition save South Shields School petition one. This petition has two thousand seven hundred and thirty eight signatories, nine hundred and eighty four who reside in South Tyneside. Petition save South Shields School petition two. This petition has three thousand eight hundred and ninety two signatories. In accordance with standing orders, I propose that the petition stand referred to the appropriate officers for further consideration. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Is that agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to receive motions under procedure rule ten. One motion has been received under this rule submitted by councillors Punchin, Dix, Ellison, Huntley, Donaldson, Purvis, Amar, S Stevenson and MacMillan. I will ask councillor Purvis to move the motion and she may speak for up to three minutes. I will then ask whether the motion is seconded. The secondant may speak for up to three minutes or reserve the right to speak later in the debate. The motion will then be open to debate by members who may each speak for up to three minutes and may move amendments. Councillor Purvis?
Mr May, members, as a lifelong trade union member and secretary of South Tyneside Trades Council, I'm delighted to move this motion. South Tyneside council believes that every job should be a great job. That means workers in our area should be paid fairly, work in a safe and healthy workplace, be treated decently and with respect, have regular hours, have a chance to be represented by unions and be consulted on what matters at work and get the chance to learn and progress at work and get on in life. I don't think anybody would disagree with that. The council further wants to write to the regional T U C endorsing their campaign which is outlined in the motion and inform the boroughs MPs of our position and encourage them to support the Great Jobs Agenda. A philosopher once said these very wise words to the effect that theory is grey and experience is green. So don't expect me to bombard you with statistics because I think we can become blase about figures. X number of people are homeless, X number of people are below the poverty line. We sometimes get desensitized with these figures whereas the homeless man in the doorway or the woman at the food bank actually resonates with us a lot more. The reality is the people in the low paid jobs in the borough, far from the nirvana of low unemployment portrayed, the reality on the ground that we come across as councillors is entirely different. The reality is the woman in the low paid job who says to me she can't afford her four prescription items until she gets paid at the end of the month. So she has to do without vital medication. The man who says to me he can't afford to have his heating on or to take a shower because he can't top up his electricity card until he gets paid at the end of the month. That is the absolute reality for people living in our borough. The gig economy where you don't know from one day to the next how many hours you're going to have, how much money you're going to receive is the reality for the people we represent. It's an absolute fact that unionized workplaces offer better pay and conditions. You only have to like me, sit on the employment tribunals and see what it's like for some individual to try and represent themselves against absolute, you know, employers who want to do them down and see the contrary position where somebody's represented by Unison who've got a spectacularly good record, I've got to mention that, in defending their workers both in the workplace and on a higher level. So I want to say to you that this motion is terribly important. It's not going to be achieved overnight and it's not going to be instant success. Another saying is that the journey of a thousand miles begins with a single step. Let's take that single step here tonight. Let's vote to support this motion. Let's vote to endorse the T U C campaign and let's try and make South Tyneside a better place for the people who live there and work there. I commend this motion to you.
Is the motion seconded? Would you like to speak? Would you like to speak now councillor Amar? The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to speak? Ask a question or move an amendment councillor Ed Martin?
Yeah, thank you. That was you, was it? Sorry. Okay, one now. Yes, thank you, Mr May. Mr May, full employment, that is genuine full employment, should be a human right in any distant society. That does not mean jobs at any price. The economic imbalance in the economy, in the rise of the gig economy has brought us with a fresh chance to exploit wealth which is resulting in social and economic inequality and insecure work. Insecure work includes people working on zero other contracts, we've heard about yours this evening, temporary agency work and low paid self-employed. Three point five million people could be in insecure work by 2022 if current trend continues. The team received before Great Jobs Agenda explores what place based industrial strategies can do to make sure that no matter where people are born or where they work, everyone will be given a chance to get a great job. The Great Job Agenda also sets out standards to ensure fair pay, guaranteed hours, safe and healthy workplace, proper union representation and the chance to learn and progress at work. The campaign is just not, is just not what the council can do as an employer or what it can do to promote standards to other employers globally. The T U C's Great Job Agenda will see employers make commitments to providing staff with fair, stable and safe employment measured across a range of factors including pay, conditions and prospects. Of course, many of those standards closely mirror those already used by South Tyneside council. This includes providing employees with a voice of work through creating recognition and consulting on important decisions, ensuring fair and decent pay reflecting the real living wage rather than lower levels set by the government's minimum wage which the council has done since 2016. In addition, we are working to reduce the gender gap in pay between men and women equally. However, because we decide to give our services in house with good terms and conditions, many of these jobs are part time and held by women which impacts on our gender pay gap figures. Workplace learning and progression is assured through a focus on high quality apprenticeships while the council also works hard to ensure that health and wellbeing of staff and support employees in a number of ways including flexible working, counselling services and employee services. We are working with our training and colleagues to bring these together with our health and wellbeing strategy. At the regional level, the council is committed to the delivery of the North East Strategic Economic Plan which sets out ambitions and actions for partners to support economic growth. As part of this, there is a commitment to create a one hundred and thirty thousand new jobs by 2024. Some of these jobs will be defined as great jobs including roles such as managers, directors, professionals and technical forces. Such job creation will provide better opportunities and prospects for our residents. Mr May, following decades of deindustrialisation and the hovering out of our labour markets, some communities in the UK and the North East in particular has been left without good unionized jobs that provide the pay and the skills to get on. This cannot continue, Mr May. South Tyneside should be proud of a friend who is a good employer. We should also wholeheartedly support the T U C's Great Jobs Agenda. Thank you, Mr May.
Councillor Perry?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment after listening to you.
Can you use, yeah, thank you.
Councillor Purvis, for many years we sat on private tribunals and some of the cases of employers exploiting the workforce, I can believe, like a guy on a minimum wage, it's a cubicle, if you're in uniform and he's a lot older. Several cases like that and that's a cubie case but the dog, which is more, is a more money per week than the dog owner. So there's lots of people here who are very, very modern players who will exploit everybody at every given opportunity as essential items always give support to improve people's conditions and wages at the moment.
Thank you councillor Perry. Any other member wish to speak? Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The motion is agreed. That concludes the business for today's meeting. Thank you for your attendance.